Good evening. I would like to open the Thursday, October 26, 2023 Douglas Planning Board Meeting to order. First on the agenda, A and R for Orange Street Newborn, New Sherborne LLC, possible votes. Is anyone in to present for Orange Street?
Yes, I'm on Zoom. I'm Robert Babcock. I'm the PLS that did that plan.
All right.
So essentially, this is the same plan that was approved by the board to make seven lots. The client has decided not to do this, and the plan had been recorded already at the registry. So we filed this plan to merge those lots back into the original configuration that it was. So making sure that we have a clear chain of title on what's going on with this property.
Okay. And joining us on Zoom as well, Mr. Chaplin, have you just introduced yourself for the board and for the meeting?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Very Steve Chaplin, B. Talerman, Acosta, we're town council for the town of Douglas.
Okay. Have you had a chance to look at this? Does this look all set in your eyes?
I've not had an opportunity to look at the A and R.
Okay.
But is it just rescinding of the?
Yeah. Robert, is there a way you'd be able to maybe share it to the screen or anything?
I can try. Let me see how you do that. I am not terribly used to Zoom, but give me one moment and I will. Okay, I think that did it.
Yep.
Okay.
So essentially, this AP 289 Lot 4, we had previously filed a plan that was approved and recorded that created these Lot 27, 28, 29, 30, 30. There were seven lots created. It's looked exactly like this plan. The only difference is now our client has decided that they don't want to subdivide this into A and R separate lots, and they're recombining the lots back into the original configuration for AP 289 Lot 4. I put on here a purpose of plan note, Note 10, which references the recording of the original A and R when it was recorded in the registry, explaining that the idea behind this is just to combine the lots back in. And our usual thing, don't normally do this.
Okay. So just so you know, our econo- not our economic, our what is Matt's title? Community Development Director, he is not in. So we just usually get some input from him, just that he's reviewed it and everything looks all set, you know, regarding our bylaws and everything like that. So that's why I'm just trying to see if the town council was able to weigh in at all.
All I can tell you is that what the statute requires is so long as all of the lots shown have the requisite frontage on either a public way or another way of access that satisfies the statutory requirements. And when I say adequate frontage, I believe it's adequate frontage in the zoning district itself, although I could pull up the statute. But as long as you meet that requirement, then the A and R is to be endorsed.
Okay.
Endorsement of an A and R is not an endorsement of zoning or anything of that nature, simply of adequate frontage.
Okay. And it looks like it all, and it's how it was pre-existing. So, Board, any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I mean, if I may through the chair, it just, I mean, seems like a pretty simple thing to refer back to what it was. But again, like our chair suggested, that our Economic Development person has not viewed this, and he's not here. And I don't know if I, I mean, this is a little tricky in it. It seems simplistic, but it's a something unorthodox type thing. What do you think, Mike?
I think it's fine because adequate frontage.
Yeah, it's an A and R.
Yeah, it's an A and R, straightforward A and R. There's a note, like you specified on Note 10. I remember this from when they broke it out.
It wasn't that long ago.
No. So all they're doing is just putting it back. Oh, I have no problem.
All right. Anyone care to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R presented before us for Orange Street, New Sherborne LLC.
Second motion made by Mr. Zwicker, sorry, I'm Ms. Schlusman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all set. We'll have that signed and should be ready tomorrow for you?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll send somebody by, if not tomorrow, we'll be hanging next week to pick it up.
All right, sounds good.
Now we just need to know how to unshare this.
We're not open.
You're stuck in the meeting all night now, I'm sorry.
Ah, I see. Wait, wait, stop sharing. There it is. Okay. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we did have a public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM for Anthony and Megan Fiero. We did receive a message requesting to withdraw the application without prejudice, so we are going to move on from that and not hear anything in regards to that. Moving right along. So I'm going to have Mr. Menerik approach and identify himself, and we're going to talk about Blackstone Logistics.
Good evening, Board. Bob Menerik, Economic Development. At the last meeting, we started this conversation on this pre-occupancy traffic validation. In the decision that this board issued at the end of the permitting process, not less than 30 days prior to the commencement of occupation by any user or users utilizing 33% or more of the gross floor area, shall provide a written statement of the proposed user and their traffic operational characteristics. That was done by VHB with their memorandum, which you have a copy of. One of the questions that Mike Zwicker brought up last time was addressed at the Sutton Plan Board Meeting. And Jake Schultzberg, Mike Zwicker, myself attended the Sutton Planning Board Meeting last Monday, and they asked the same question, what happens about the other third or the quarter for 75% occupancy? That will trigger another one of these pre-occupation traffic validations. This one is just for this tenant right now. And according to VHB, they are well below the thresholds that were established within that traffic study conducted when the decision was made. So all you're really doing tonight is verifying that you did receive this traffic validation per Decision Number 15. And Fletcher and Tilton has supplied a letter to the board, I believe it's in your packet.
Yep.
It requires just one signature. Sutton did their signature Monday night, Oxbridge did their signature last night. So we are the third town of this tri-town warehouse.
Okay. Yeah, and seeing the presentation from Mr. Brodeur and VHB, it's pretty self-explanatory and just a regulatory thing, just acknowledge and sign, so.
It's just a simple acknowledgement that you received the pre-occupation traffic validation.
All right.
That they're below the limits, and they are well below the limits.
All right. And the letter, the one in the packet has listed Tracy Sharkey, the only signature needed. I think there was an updated one with me being able to sign. Does the board have any issues with me just signing that and releasing that to them? All right, yeah, all set.
Yep.
That was like staples. Thank you.
As always, Bob, it was a pleasure having you join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Bob, have a good night. Still got five minutes. All right. Let's do meeting schedules, see if we can tackle that out of the way. Jim, what are we looking at?
So I have two different drafts. You have a Thursday schedule and a Wednesday schedule, as some of you will be looking to try to change your nights. So it's totally up to the board, and you can adjust it as needed.
All right. I know I can, I can go either way. It doesn't matter to me.
I would recommend maybe we have more board members here.
Yeah, because I think.
Or do you need to know right now?
No, no, we can wait at least one more meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Well, at least should have Tracy by then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, she would rather go to Wednesday, I know that. I think you would rather Thursday. So you and Tracy will have the debate.
Yeah. I can go either.
Yeah. All right.
Table that till the next meeting. Then all we have to do is on the dates, June, July, and August.
Can't get rid of one, yeah. So we have some quick.
Did you say Thursday or?
Or Wednesdays.
Thursday or Wednesday?
I guess I have no problem.
Well, I know Tracy would prefer Wednesday, so if.
Right.
That's all aboard, though. Yeah, we'll just wait for her to cancel the days. Maybe she has a better plan or a plan in mind.
Next meeting.
Yeah. All right. Ongoing development, we have some site inspection memo from BW Solar.
To the chair, I'll accuse myself on that one.
Okay. Are we expecting anyone from BW Solar, or is this just strictly a memo?
Okay. Then I'm back. It doesn't matter. I thought someone was going to be.
So we have, you know, I'll just say it as well, Sleepy Hollow Site Inspection Memo. So, Board, we have two memos in our packet, one for BW Solar and one for Sleepy Hollow. We should be able to just take that home and read that, and I don't think we need to act on it at this moment, but just for our knowledge. They don't need any, there's no. Two more minutes, all right. Also in our packet, where is it? Administrative Policy and Procedure Master Plan Update. We have some correspondence from a few of the boards. And we have a few delegates that gladly elected to join this committee. We've got Maxwell Postma as a representative from the Board of Selectmen, and it looks like the Building and Facilities Construction Committee voted to have Linda Brown be the representative for the Master Plan Committee. So that committee seems like it's moving forward, and we'll get some dates and get working on that.
Through the chair, and also thank you. The master plan was sent to us via email to all of us, so we have that.
Shocked it was able to fit.
Some sleepy-eyed reading.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, appreciate it, all whatever, 2,000 more piece.
All right, 7:15. We will continue the public hearing for Pine, Sand, and Stone Company Incorporated, Application for Earth Removal Permit ER-230906, Site Plan Review SPR-230906, and Special Permit SP-20230906. 93 Cliff Street, Possible Votes.
Andy from Pine Sand?
How you doing, Andy?
Not sure how to start here unless we want to have David discuss the peer review letter.
Sure. Yeah, let's start with, David, can you just start us off with some information?
Uh, yep. Is it all right if I share my screen? Hey, good evening. My name's David Feist with CMG. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yeah. Dave, I don't know if you can bring the mic a little closer to you?
Okay, how's this? Is a little better?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is David Feist with CMG. We received the peer review letter from Jeff Walsh at Graves Engineering. Basically, he was in agreement with our stormwater design as well as in agreement with our zoning analysis for the project. There were a few minor comments. We were able to provide a response letter this week and deliver it to Jen Kutcher yesterday. Basically, the only, one of the things Jeff identified is Sucker Brook is south of our site, which is a cold water fishery. So as such, we just had documented our stormwater report that our stormwater design complies with those requirements as well as land use high potential pollutant load. The only minor change was we split this sediment basin here into double four bay in order to comply with the cold water fisheries, as well as, and that was really the only substantive comment in Jeff's letter. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may.
Do we have Jeff lined up at all? Okay. I know we would probably want to just hear from him first. Any changes to the plan?
No, David, you hear that question? Yep, really, the only change was for this stormwater basin located for the upper yard. We just added a berm separating the two halves to create two four bays, just to increase the sediment removal in that particular basin. And then we added a note regarding the sightline clearing on the south side of Sutton Road. And then we added a note regarding just contacting the mobile pipeline prior to an blasting on the property. And those were the only changes to the plan.
Okay.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
The last time we were here, we were tasked by the board to do a few things. So we did an internal sound study. The sound study that the state is going to be performing at Pine, we're waiting for the design from the state.
Correct.
So we did one. I'll let Murray talk about that in a second. Murray, we were also asked to talk to the town of Oxford.
And Webster.
Webster. We did that. Our butter raised the concern of a oil spill years ago. We had CMG, David's firm, do a chemical analysis of the groundwater. Everything is fine.
What's the status with the communication to Oxford and Webster?
I'll let David, Murray will talk.
Murray Bristol, Pine, Sand, and Stone. I reached out.
Feel free to come on, yeah.
Hi there. So I reached out by, through email.
Okay.
To the town manager of Oxford and the economic development of Webster. And in essence, I got back the feedback that it's basically, I hate to say not their problem, but they feel that it's a Douglas Planning Board. You know, as long as we're doing our due diligence through the planning board of Douglas.
Okay.
That's what they're.
Was that email? Was it email or phone call?
So I got an email from, back from Webster.
Okay.
But I actually, I had to go to Oxford, to the town manager's office to engage them because they didn't reply to me.
Okay. I'm just trying to think if maybe we can get some, you know, forward the email to Jen or a letter from, you know, whatever town, just to.
Absolutely.
Just so we have that communication, we know, you know, we can trust you, but.
No, no, I get it.
You don't know if they're telling you to have a hearing, so just have some kind of paper trail for that. Sorry, I just want to take your, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine. While Murray's here, if you want to talk about sound?
I'm just trying to think how much sound we can get into with the engineer, you know what I mean? Do you want to, should we hear this about the sound or wait? Because we might need it to be reviewed anyways.
Well, it needs to be reviewed first before, I think, that we do have Graze, right?
Probably.
All right, that's fine.
Yep.
Just.
Then if we could have Graze online, that way everybody's all in the same discussion with Graze, you guys, anybody else in the public, the whole nine yards. Hopefully have documentation from the two towns to go over that. I think on that aspect of it, we're not going to be able to analyze all the fine details, at least I don't think.
Yeah. And we have a little hiccup going on with staffing as well right now, so it just, to be able to get the engineer and everything here, it was going to take some legwork and research, so.
At least now we know what to set it up.
Yep.
For the next one.
Yep.
For Jen, yeah.
Whatever we need.
Okay.
I think that would be a good start on that aspect. I see the other punch list.
Were you able to look into any complaints from your active operation or anything like that?
We have no complaints.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything on record for 23 years.
Okay. Any other updates or anything else you want to bring up at this moment?
We submitted, I think.
Oh, yes.
To Matt, so.
So they submitted an RDA to conservation.
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll be on the November 20th.
Okay. You mentioned the pipeline. Which pipeline? Is that the abandoned one or the active gas?
Can I defer?
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah. They say they're going to use it from time to time.
It's still an active, yeah. Just, I know, the question was deferred to you, just, what's your name, please?
Brian Smith.
Okay.
I spoke to the group September 26th.
Okay. Yes, that's a, they've been a mobile pipeline.
If I can to the chair, that pump station is no longer, that line is dead.
Neither that, that.
Also my property, that's a dead line.
Yeah. It's still an easement, though, I believe.
Yeah, it's not mobile anymore.
Right.
It's no longer, it's on mobile. I forget even who has it now.
It's immobile. It's immobile.
Yeah.
From Texas, Buckeye?
Is it Buckeye? Yeah.
Buckeye, yeah.
And then they sold, if I can, they sold that pump station, I think, to the town, all the property.
So if the comment on the plant says mobile, we might need to make sure it's the right company.
I know it's not mobile anymore. That's on number six in the general comments.
It had a use for a while.
I think a couple of years, two years, three years.
I think longer than that. Board, any, I know it's kind of, we haven't really brought up a whole lot. Obviously, we'd want our engineers to be here to answer some questions and give us some feedback. Any questions from any members of the board?
The sound you say is done, the letters from the town we'll get. There's already a stack from Graze. Find out on the pipeline. Activity or no activity, and who actually owns it? And I think that should cover it. Isn't that have Graze and everybody on board next meeting?
November 9th.
Please.
And this is a public hearing. I know there's some members in the audience and maybe online. This is probably, this is going to be continued to the next meeting. We didn't really bring up a whole lot. Just open it up if anyone has any questions or comments with what was brought up at all. For.
Just a question. I'm not familiar with your business to the chairman.
Yeah, just demon address, just.
My name is Brian Smith. I'm part of the Smith Estate that we are the adjacent windows.
Okay.
How do you determine the noise level?
Thank you. Murray Bristol, the Pine, Sand, and Stone. Reading about it, it's based on the, I believe it's based on the ambient air, not the air, the current noise levels of the site. So it's dictated with some flexibility, you know, I mean, that's, I don't know what the high and low parameters are. It's dictated by the state.
Are you asking how physically it's determined?
No.
Who?
How do you know the noise will be generated from the site until the site's up and running? Is there, what's the process used to come up with the numbers?
So we are going through the process now. In a couple of months at our current facility, we're going to have people on site that are performing a noise study for us. So what they do is they pick points within a certain range, just off property, to reflect what the typical noise is in that environment at a, in the neighborhood. And they, from there, they have different levels as to what's acceptable. And based on that, you know, they make recommendations, whether it's, if it's too loud, they would probably say, all right, you need to.
Build a wall.
Solve it somehow, you know, turn the plant, or, you know, to, somehow to reduce the levels.
I think we would use our.
Andy.
We would use our existing facility.
So we'll have some information relatively soon, based on that, you know.
Through the chair, if I can ask a question. So is there, I'm sorry, are there documented levels on the existing industrial use now that's there?
Informally, I took levels. We're at about 80 decibels, 83 decibels at the plant itself. At about 500 feet away, it drops to 60, thereabouts.
At Blackie Dam?
Currently at Pine.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about the existing industrial use that's there.
I haven't been over there to do any testing.
I mean, is there some historic data, you know, creates a, like a standard and what the delta would be, you know, so that.
I'm sure the study would have what's going on there now.
Yeah, yeah.
And then compared it to what numbers would be coming.
Who, are you doing it, or are you having a certi-?
We will have, yeah, a certified person doing this, correct.
Correct. So I understand, to the chair, I know where you guys are at now, but I understand the question. Are you going to where you want to go? You measure then those levels, then you compare the two and merge it together as far as the radius, what you have going on with sound. Because you're in an open pit. Over there, you're going to have trees and stuff around you, so there could be less or more shielding of noise. I don't know, I'm not engineering sound, but I think that's the question that's being raised is, I know what's going on at your place, but you're not going to be there. So who cares? It's going to be where you're going to.
Right. I mean, it's what we, we're trying to liken it to what the sound potential will be. I mean, we don't know what the acoustics are or anything like that, so how it's going to, how it's going to be, but we can try to project how we can. But ultimately, we do need to get a certified person in.
So again, through the chair, is the benchmark to the houses in Douglas that, like, if you're in the middle of Death Valley and somebody makes noise and it's, you know, there's 500 acres of nothingness out there, you know, who does it disturb?
The fox.
The deer, the whatever, but I'm just saying, is it, is it the house, the livability of a home? Is that where they're?
Ultimately, it's, so at our current facility, you know, they're going to put something by the Shell Station, and they're going to put something on Gilboa Court, because that's the closest property.
No, I meant on the.
Well, they'll have to liken that to wherever the houses are.
Well, you are working on a sound study.
Correct.
Do we need to have?
That's right, we want Graze reviewed. We want this reviewed with Graze and have everybody on board at the next meeting.
But do we need to have our own peer review go out and do their own, or just look at what's? Do we need to have our own peer review go out and do their own, or just look at what's?
As counsel.
Yeah. I don't know.
That's good.
Yeah. Steve, I don't know if you can just weigh in on the proper procedure for that.
Happy to help. What's the, I'm not sure I understand.
So the applicant is doing a sound study of their own. We do have a peer review for more of the site plan. Are we going to need to enlist the services of our own sound engineer to go out there as well? Or do they review what's presented from the study?
That's, that's a great question. That's kind of case by case. I will say this, I chair the planning board in my town, where we use Graves Engineering to do our peer review, and it seems like that's who you guys use as well. So on a larger project where we did have sound impacts, Graves, in that case, subcontracted out with another peer reviewer that reviewed the sound study by the applicant's expert, you know, taking into account, you know, what, basically studying what is ambient level at the, at the property. I think the DEP policy is ambient plus 10 decibels. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's what it is. So anyway, I think it's at the discretion of the board, but it certainly wouldn't be unheard of to have a sound study peer reviewed. Again, in my experience, I've worked with Graves, I don't necessarily know that they do it, it might be something that they farm out, but it's, it's certainly something that the board can have done, and, you know, in my experience, the applicant pays for that as well, like they do for the other peer review services.
You can work with it. You understand that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think through the chair, that's the correct way to do it.
Yeah.
Through Graves and whatever Graves needs to do, that way they have, they have, they sub it out or whatever, then have Graves and that other party all online or present.
Yeah.
Want it's all reviewed, so if there's any questions brought up at all, taking care of them one shot.
Okay. So a hand up again?
The reason I brought this whole discussion up is, with the wonderful world of the internet, you can go on there and look at what does a rock crushing quarry plant generate for noise? And it runs from, this gentleman said 80, which is at the low point, up to 116. It's mentioned this is in a pit that's good, where this is located, is on the side of a hill. So it would be very important that an objective group go in and measure this thing to determine what is the real level of sound we're going to have.
Yep, so we're going to, they're going to go out there, and the town is going to be that objective, looking into this on behalf of the town and the concerns.
David Dupont, attorney for the estate of Smith. My only other question that was raised today was blasting. Is blasting going to be something that's regularly done on the site now, or is it just going to be to install? Or is there, you know?
There would probably.
Probably be a little bit more noise from that than just regular operations, so.
Yeah, to be determined. I would hazard to guess that the blasting, to get the site to the workable grades would be on a monthly or every other month basis?
Blasting will be included in the sound plan?
Through the chair, two questions. Does the bla, do people need to be notified when the blasting is going to occur? Will the neighbors be notified?
Yeah, so how that works is every structure within 250 feet has to be surveyed, and then typically the blasting permit is issued by the fire chief, and then there would be a fire detail, and then if typically residents want to be notified, then part of the permit is, any resident that wants to be notified has to be notified in X amount of time, you know, whether that's 24, 48 hours.
Is it 20, 250 feet from the blasting point, or from the property?
From the blasting point.
Okay.
Oh, and so we're doing a permit now in Westwood for Zavarian, so if additional people wanted their house surveyed, we would accommodate that, even if they were beyond alert. Through the chair, if we could, when you spoke to the other towns, did you tell them that you're going to be blasting? Reason, the reason I'm bringing this up is, as we all know, most of the houses aren't on the Douglas side. They are in Oxford and the other side of the road. So I think it would be a prudent thing to do, is, I know you had communication with them, but those people might want to be notified of what's going on, where they might know, or be watching this show because it's in Douglas. I think those other towns should definitely be notified, and in any letter that we get back from those towns, it states that they've been notified that you will be blasting and/or the abutters of that general area have also been notified, in case they do want to be notified or not notified. I think it would be, in my opinion, a cordial thing to do.
Yeah.
I mean, you want to be a good neighbor. I think that's a good way to start. So I think, but have it go through the town, so the towns themselves know, because that way they're, when their police department phone starts ringing off the horn, they know why.
They understand, sure.
You know what I'm saying? Because I know, I don't think the town line's 250 feet, I think it's much further than that, so they might not even know what's going on if you do that 250 foot circle.
I did see a hand raised in this corner.
Rodney, it's 69 Cliff Street. I'm involved with Andy with buying this land from us, but I developed that land that you're talking about, and we had hammers and a crusher there for almost a year, hammering through ledge and crushing it up to put our buildings in, and nobody complained. I mean, we were there through three seasons with the trees, with leaves, trees without leaves, with snow on the ground, with snow not on the ground. Nobody complained. I mean, we had two excavators with him, granted, we weren't blasting, but we also had a crusher running, crushing that stone up. So I don't know why nobody complained at that time, it was an issue. We didn't hear anybody, anything from anybody on the road. Nobody said boo, nobody complained. I mean, it's in the middle of nowhere, you know, at the end of the day, and I'm surprised that there, somebody's complaining now after we've already been there for.
Well, I wouldn't say they're complaining, they're more inquiring at this moment.
Well, they didn't hear the noise when we built there five years ago, they had a year to listen.
I'm just trying not to have a debate, and, you know, it's presented, yeah.
I'm kind of concerned why this is a.
Yeah, I'm just defending anyone, you know, here, that they're not complaining, they're, they're inquiring.
Right.
For the process.
Right.
So.
But I guess my point is, it was an odd issue, thank God, when we were there.
Yeah.
We were building it, developing it.
If I can to the chair, remember when, before you, when you guys, there, but it came in front of the board for the permits, and that was known that they were going to have to hammer and cut to make.
Yeah, there is a lot of hammering.
Yeah.
Sorry, through the chair, just timing wise, I think we had talked about coming back on November 9th. Will the sound study be completed and will Graves have time to?
I think it's something we have to look into pretty quick and then get back to Jen.
I just don't know, I don't.
You can always put it for the next, and if the stuff's not in, and we're still in kind of a weird limbo, we move it to the next.
And if I can to the chair, main reason, normally in November, December, we're going to have one meeting each month, so if you want to get it moving along, then they need to have time to review it and all that.
Try for the next meeting, or just?
Get back to Jen, early next week.
Yes.
So we'll probably end up just continuing to the next meeting for 7 o'clock, 7 P. M.
Sure.
7:15, yeah. And if it's not ready, we'll continue it from then. I just, anyone online have any questions? I just wasn't paying attention on the screen if anyone had their hands up at all. All right. Motion.
Motion to continue the public hearing for Pine, Sand and Stone for November 9th at 7:15.
Second.
Motion to Mr. Zwick, second by Mr. Socrate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Aye. Can't believe in November already coming up.
I can't believe it was so fast. I'm a major concern. Because Smith can come up.
Um. Just go through this. Okay, Jen, if you can help me figure this out. Draft decision legacy circle.
Major concern.
Jen, I'm, we're just going to be continuing our meeting, I don't know if you can, just take it outside or?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can tell we're new to this.
Um.
So town council reviewed the draft that never got circulated after recommendations from Ken Fraser and Building and Matt Wojcik, town administrator. They just made a few suggestions, we sent it off to town council, and they redlined, I think page six is really the only changes.
So their council's fine with it, our council's fine with it?
Yep.
Okay.
Don't be, has anything to add?
Mr. Chapman, anything to add for this? Did he review it? Was he the one that reviewed it?
He was, yes.
Okay.
Say that again?
Just, just making sure, you were the one to review, not someone else, and you were just representing. Yeah, anything to add for this?
No, no, those are, those are my red lines.
Okay.
I noticed that there were some questions on our end. I believe the applicant drafted the decision, so we, you know, we had a couple of questions, but it seemed like it was, you know, we just kind of needed to find some language that was agreeable to everybody, and the engineer actually responded after I circulated those and said they were fine with them.
Okay, all right.
Through the chair, oh, page eight.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're all.
That's right, Mr. Chair, there were, there were three, three paragraphs, two of them were on page six, one was on page eight.
Okay. So we already voted on this, it's just more of a, we just need to sign it?
Quick review when we.
Okay. I guess since there was changes, maybe we'll just do a quick vote that we accept the decision as written and maybe?
Do we need another vote?
We already. I don't know.
With modifications, I'd say.
Which I don't.
Yeah, do we, do we need to?
Another vote? We already.
It's not going to, it's not going to hurt to vote to accept the decision as revised. I don't know that you need it.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt, just cover it, just in case, but I think there's a timeline on this, so don't want to be, make the wrong thing, rather just cover it. So I entertain a motion to accept and sign the decision as revised.
So moved for, and that's for what, 100 Davis Street?
It's at the legacy circle.
Okay.
Legacy.
Okay.
Now second that.
Didn't you make it?
No, you did.
Oh, okay. I said I'll entertain it, so.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Socrate, second by Mr. Greco, all is in favor.
Aye.
All right, we will sign this, and Jen will take care of getting that out to where she needs to get it to.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Fantastic. Do you guys need me for anything else this evening?
I don't think we're actually going to be doing anything else besides minutes. I believe I covered everything, unless you see something that I missed. Yeah, we're all set, Steve.
I would like to.
I believe, I don't know, we're probably going to need someone for next meeting as well.
November 9th.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, just reach out to either Jay Tallerman or Brian Winter, and they'll probably be sending me out as well.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a great night.
You too.
Okay.
All right, minutes. How are we looking?
August 24th.
Looking good, Mike, or what?
Yeah, I'll make a motion on, to approve the meeting minutes as written for August 24th.
I'll second that.
23.
I'm just going to make a quick change. Sorry, I actually got the paperwork I had from the week before. Oh, okay, you did, all right.
Wow.
That's all right. All right. I didn't even submit it, but you found them.
Good.
All right. Just forgot that.
I second that.
All right, motion made by Mr. Greco, seconded by Mr. Zwick, all is in favor.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Anyone get to look at September 14th? I don't think I have.
I think the other ones are new. They could be wrong, but.
Okay.
I don't think we saw them before tonight.
Yeah, table those for next meeting.
Yeah. Do you want these back? You can use them, unless somebody wants to.
Or they have enough add-on that I need to make.
No. So instead of printing them back out?
Oh, oh, yeah, you, yeah, keep them in your folder if you guys have them.
Okay.
Saves some trees.
Well, I'm going to take them anyway, so.
We have them.